Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, June 24. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. We have guests in our boardroom today, so welcome to our board meeting. The first item we move to item 1.1 land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father, National Anthem. And our staff, to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today, is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty learn.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Check. Thank you. Student trustee Yebor, please listen to the opening prayer, the Our Father and National Anthem. Student trustee Yebor, are you there?
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you through here. So as this is the last meeting, I just wanted to do a prayer to kind of close out the year. So if you'll join me in the center of the cross, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time we spent together in these meetings. Bless us as we go our separate ways and help, help us keep you in our hearts. Lord, we thank you for your presence with each of us in each gathering. We are grateful for discussions, decisions, and relationships that we form. As we leave this meeting, we ask for your guidance and continued blessings in our work. May we carry the spirit of these meetings in our future endeavors. In your name we pray, amen. And now, if you please join me in the words that Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Yebor. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any deletions or corrections to the agenda? Notice I said deletions or corrections. Special board meetings, there's no additions or eliminations. Do we have any deletions or corrections? Singnan, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Powell moves, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ohan Chanada, seconds. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote? Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Agnew? Trustee Agnew? Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Saunders?
Favor.
Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yebor?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? We have seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention. The motion carries, the agenda is approved. We shall now move on to our next order of business, declarations of conflict of interest. Do any trustees want to declare a conflict of interest tonight?
I'd like to declare a conflict.
Trustee Saunders, yes, okay.
Part one of the budget on salaries.
Okay, hold on. Any other trustees would like to declare a conflict of interest? Let me check. The list, trustee Kelly, your hand is up?
Yes, for the same conflict of interest under budget estimates.
Somebody informs to the board, okay. Thank you. We shall now move on to our next order of business, action items. Item 4, 4.1 Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review, School Boundary Review Committee Recommendations. This was shared at the last board meeting as the staff report. It's now an action item. Superintendent Merrick, please present this item. And then I will read the motion and place it on the table. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the final recommendation of the Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee. Again, to remind trustees, this review stems from ongoing residential development in the Boyne area in South Milton and increasing enrollment that we're seeing at St. Scholastica and St. Veronica Elementary Schools. We're seeking approval of the proposed boundary changes to prepare for the September 2026 opening of Milton 11. And trustees, remember that this program was, or this school was funded under the capital priorities program back in 2022, 2023 school year. This, our school boundary review process, we know was guided by policy I-29 and procedure VI-88. The process for this boundary review began back in January of 2025. We had four in-person committee meetings, as well as one public information meeting that was held. All those meetings were held between February and May of 2025. And we did gather community feedback between the end of April and the middle of May. And there was 80% of the respondents were showing support or neutrality of the two, of the proposed option, the final option that was selected by the committee. And then, as presented, we walked through the option last week. But the, the option that the committee recommended initially was option B-3B. And then, based on the community feedback, they changed that into option B-3C, which added in some program phasing and some reducing the student transitions amongst the schools. And again, I want to thank all the SBRCE committee members. They're listed in Appendix A of your report tonight. And I'll just walk through the changes quickly for the proposed changes for the boundaries. In the regular track, in your maps that you have there, areas 53B, 53C, and V-58 will move from St. Veronica to St., to Milton Number 11. The East Milton Rural Areas, excluding Area 350E, would shift from St. Peter's to Milton 11. And then, any future growth in the Egerton, Trafalgar, and Britannia Secondary Plans would be held at Milton Number 11 until new schools in that area are built.
Can I interrupt? Yeah. Can we have the map put up, please? Sorry, go ahead.
And there's also built into that option our legacy exceptions for grade eight students in the 2026, 2027 school year. Now, on the French immersion side, Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School would open with grades one to five French immersion and adding a grade each year, subsequent year, until it reaches the full complement of grade one to eight French immersion. The feeder schools for the French immersion program at Milton 11 would be St. Veronica and Milton Number 11 itself. The grade two to five students within the boundary would transfer from St. Peter's and St. Scholastica. And the grade six to eight students, since that school doesn't open with French immersion in grade six to eight, they would receive legacy exceptions for the 2026, 27 school year and stay at their, their current school until they graduate. So. Those are the details of the proposed boundary changes. Moving forward, the pending approval of trustees, of course, the boundary changes would take effect for September 2026. And staff continue to monitor the project timelines for the new construction of that school and communicate if any changes or delays occur. And so there's one motion for trustee consideration, again, another long motion like we saw at our last board meeting. But detailing all of the boundary changes, and that's the recommendation of the school boundary review committee.
So, sorry Superintendent Merrick, so the purple area goes to the new school, right? Map? Okay, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Merrick. I'll now read the motion, if you can have the motion up there. It's a very long motion, so bear with me. Resolve that the Holden Catholic District School Board directs staff to adjust the regular track boundaries for the 2026, 27 school year as follows. One, Area 53B, 53C, and V-58 reassigned from St. Veronica Catholic Elementary School to Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School. And number two, East Milton Rural Areas, except Area 350E, reassigned from St. Peter Catholic Elementary School to Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School. Resolve that the grade eight regular track students in the 2026, 2027 school year who reside within the Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School regular track boundary be granted legacy exceptions until graduation. Resolve that the optional French immersion program boundaries be adjusted for the 2026, 27 school years such that St. Veronica Catholic Elementary School and Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School become the designated feeder schools to the Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School French immersion program. Resolve that the grade two to five French immersion students in the 2026, 27 school year at St. Peter Catholic Elementary School and St. Scholastica Catholic Elementary School and residing within the Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School French immersion boundaries be transferred to Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School. Resolve that grade six to eight French immersion students in the 26, 27 school year who reside within the new Milton Number 11 Catholic Elementary School French immersion program boundary be granted legacy exceptions at their previously designated French immersion schools until graduation. May I have a mover for this item? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Powell moves. I can second this item. So I'll second it. So with this, I shall now open up question time. Your trustees have three minutes for questions, three minutes for debate. If you want to question, do open up question time, trustees, please put your hand up. Trustee Saunders, you have.
Yeah, through you, Mr.
Give me a second. Need to start my timer. Trustee Saunders, go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Superintendent Merrick, just, I'm not clear. Is this the school, we were looking at some numbers last week where there was a school where there was a majority of French families that weren't in favor of the boundary review. Is that this school or is that a different school?
I can answer that. That's, that was Georgetown.
That was Georgetown, yeah.
Okay. This is Milton.
So it's, it's, yeah, so a different school, yeah, okay. And so can I ask just Superintendent Merrick, how was this received by the French parents? Do you have any numbers that substantiate how they felt about this?
I'll pass it on to Bronco and Dylan there, who are the experts in this boundary review.
Thank you, and so the chair. So when we went out to the public, I believe it was in late April or early May. For the survey, we had about a good turnout from the French immersion parents. So it was about half French immersion, half regular track, which is pretty high for, I guess, a distribution for the responses.
And I'm sure what was their support rate?
I could look that up right now. I'll just take a minute. So if there's any other questions, Mr. Chair, maybe I can.
Trustee Saunders, any other questions? You have three minutes, okay. Okay, any other trustees have questions for regarding this item? Trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions about, there was a little bit of feedback, only 25 respondents, I believe. So some of the questions, like one of the questions I noticed, they were talking about if, if there was one school that's not completely full, would the students have an opportunity to go to the other school if there's room?
Should I?
I can.
Superintendent Merrick, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. That would depend on whether the school is open or closed across boundaries. So we, again, we, like we talked about last week, we review that process every year. We look at the utilization of the schools and determine whether it's open or closed to cross-boundary applications. The reason the number is so low for the respondents for this is that no one lives in this area. It's very few people live in this area. It's for new development. So it's, you know, new families moving in, but there's no, there's very few homes there at current. So that's why there's, you know, lower turnout than usual. We did open it up for, we sent several emails out and we even opened it up, extended the response time period to get more responses. But it's just not many folks live in that area yet, so.
It's basically a rural area, part of it. So trustee Kennedy, other questions?
Yeah, one other parent mentioned that would have been nice to show the differences between the options because they look similar. I don't know if we took maybe the, is that feedback, is that the case or is that something we can improve upon or did it look? Did every other parent have no issue with it or?
We have one member of the boundary review committee here.
Sure.
And, but, so I happen to be that every, of every meeting, it was lovely boundary review in Milton, always the best. But I don't see any concerns there, but Superintendent Merrick?
I mean, we looked at several options with the committee. And so they look at various options throughout that. So they're, they're considering, you know, the enrollments of different spots. They have to whittle it down to a preferred option to take to the community, and that's the one that's presented to the, to the broader community.
I think they were asking the question if, if they, if they could have had a chart that showed the differences between the options to be more informative. That was one of the questions I'm reading here.
We do, when we look at one of the options, we do show the enrollments by school with that option. So that, that would have been provided with the, with the package.
Bronco, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I can add a little bit to that, too. So when we did the public open house, we had charts and graphs for all the options there. So when any, when any parent would come in, all that information was provided to them.
Okay, any other questions from trustee Carabella? You have the floor. Three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, the Appendix A shows the boundary review committee. So at the end, when there's a vote taken for whichever option, so are these the people who, who each have a vote? Is that how it works or?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So it's only, through you, Mr. Chair. So it's only the SBRCE reps that, that vote. So any board staff do not vote, so planning staff, anyone else that's listed. So it's only the SBRCE reps that do have a, have a vote or say in the matter. And that's why what we're presenting tonight is the SBRCE preferred option.
Yeah, thank you. I was just making sure of that. So that would be the five people here listed, so it was five people voting on this. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? Singnan, I shall call the, oh.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to relay back the question to trustee Saunders. So I'm just looking at the data now. So the breakdown in terms of the feedback survey, it was 56% of the respondents were from the regular track families and 52% were for French immersion. But in terms of the supported feedback, it didn't break it down between French immersion and regular track, but the overall support is 80%, over 80%.
Percent and 52, so it's 108%?
It's just a percentage. So the count, like, I think it was mentioned earlier, there were only 25 respondents.
Yeah.
So for regular track, it was 13, and then for French immersion, it was 13.
Maybe you don't know if they were support or not, or, but 80% overall.
80% overall, and if it's an equal split.
Okay.
There were really no objections. We didn't, we didn't really get too much negative feedback even through the public consultation.
All right.
Or through emails during the entire process. The planning email was available to reflect if there were any concerns. And all the information was relayed back to the SBRCE committee.
Okay, thank you. I'll just pass to Superintendent Merrick, he's got something great. Go ahead.
Sorry, I should say, there are families often have students in the regular track and the French immersion. That's why that doesn't add up 100%. There's some families will have students in both different tracks.
Thank you. Since I see no other questions here, debate, any trustees want to debate on this item? If not, we shall call the vote on this item. So I shall call the vote on the motion. You see on the screen, moved by trustee Powell, and I have seconded this item. I shall call the vote. Trustee Powell, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew is here? No. Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Kelly?
In favor.
Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yebor? Trustee Yebor is there, online? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
We have seven in favor. Okay, thank you. We have seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. I must, I must thank, first of all, each and every member of the boundary review committee for all the wonderful work that you all have done, being present there. I was present at all those meetings and it was a pleasure being there. And also, big thanks to Bronco and Dylan and Superintendent Merrick and your staff for crunching all those numbers and presenting, presenting the committee and supporting them. So thanks so much for this process. It was a lovely process. Thank you. With that, we shall now move on to our next order of business, which is, we are in, under action items 4.2, 2025, 26 budget estimates. This item was shared at the last board meeting as a staff report. It is now an action item. Director Klein will introduce the 25, 26 budget. And then Superintendent Loft and team, his team will present the budget. After that, I will read the three motions, two motions separately and place them on the table. Director Klein, please present the budget.
Thank you, Chair. So we have before us the opportunity to make some final discussions, final opportunity to survey the, the budget that's proposed for 25, 26. And before we do that, I want to offer a few thanks. I'm going to start with Superintendent Aaron Loft, or Superintendent of Business Services. Goes by other names as well, but one is CFO. And I want to pay him particular thanks on behalf of this board for the work that he does day in and day out to ensure that we remain faithful to all the important principles of, of accounting and budgeting, but also to ensure that what we do is something that reflects the values and the goals and the priorities that we've set out before ourselves, namely in our MYSP, not to mention the, the myriad other regulatory rules that we have before us, ed act, et cetera. So thank you, Aaron. And again, just to highlight the two who are here with us as well, Cheryl Dalrimple, our manager, budget and capital, and Adam Cross, senior manager of financial services, who, notwithstanding his injury, joins us once again tonight. They say heroes aren't around anymore. Finally, I want to thank the trustees as well. Part of the roles of trustees that are prescribed in the ed act, a really major one is, is the budget. I want to thank you for your attention, your attendance at PD sessions that we had scheduled through the year that would focus on some of the principles of, of, of public accounting and budgeting, the principles and the nomenclature of, because it is a different language when it comes to budgeting within the educational framework, even compared to other public sector budgets, hospitals, and universities, et cetera. And you have to get used to that, that language. So thank you. And responding to the survey that, I was going to say we created, but technically and specifically, and in all honesty, it was Dr. Collmore who created a budget survey that was tailored specifically for our trustees. Of course, we had another survey that was open and perhaps that was taking advantage of two, but one that was specifically for trustees a few months ago. And for your questions and queries in different formats at different times. And as well, I'd add to the attention during the board meetings that have led up to this evening's session. Tonight, I'd just like you to bear in mind that the focus of this 25, 26 budget, one way to, I think, try and filter what we're looking at is through its alignment with the MYSP. And this board of trustees, this new set of trustees, was pretty quickly thrust into the efforts of creating an MYSP, which is hugely important in terms of your mandate and in terms of the impact that you have on the Catholic educational community. And you remember, we had a little bit of help, but we were able to get a sense from the wide array of stakeholders in our community about what the priorities and the values were for them, whether it was geographically distributed, whether it was staff, whether it was parents, clergy, et cetera. And with all of that, and with a lot of discernment, a lot of prayer and a bit of luck, we were able to come up with what I think is a very beautiful MYSP, which reflects the values of this community. And it can't get more authentic than that. And I'd emphasize, I think there is a spirit involved, too. Particularly how this reflects the strategic priorities and budget constraints that we have and the community impact. The budget itself, in terms of an overview that I, I know you'll be getting into a little more in a moment, reflects responsible stewardship of public funds, and for that, I'm very, very proud, very grateful. So it'll be a balanced budget. And if you take a look at the news that's before you every day, some of it good, but some of it also says that in the province of Ontario and other provinces, there's some real struggles in terms of budget for school boards and districts. The Ministry of Education funding guidelines are key drivers for this. Staffing is a huge component of our budgets. And the varying and ever-changing operational needs for supporting our students is a key part of what drives this budget. Some of the constraints would be the limited flexibility that we have due to earmarked funding. Unlike some private sector firms, you don't have necessarily the flexibility to shift monies from pocket A to pocket B because there's there's no flexibility in many of them. Not that that's right or wrong, it's just it's reality. And then, of course, over the last several years, cost pressures, limits in terms of supplies and inflation, we know has played a huge cost impact. Terms of the timeline, as we head toward the end of the school year, it is easy to kind of forget where we've been through the year. So I will remind trustees that we began way back in the winter, remember, when it was very cold weather? And we didn't worry about air conditioning. February 18th, precise, to be precise, the budget estimates and consultation schedule began. In March through April, there was a public consultation survey. And again, thank you very much to Dr. Collmore and our, our research team, the results of which, by the way, were outstanding in the sense of the quality and the quantity of responses that we got from, again, all throughout this region. So the survey results were presented in April. And then, in May, late May, to be precise, almost at the very end of May, the core education funding was released. And again, that's just a reality. Would we prefer it earlier? Absolutely. Has it been earlier? Yes, usually in the old days, February or March were the times when we would get it. And by the way, there would have been a lot more consultation with. And by the way, there would have been a lot more consultation with boards themselves on how to shape that, usually going back much earlier in the fall. Draft budget was presented on the third of June, and then we headed toward approval on the seventeenth of June. The, uh, M Y S P, I'd just draw your attention to the fact, not to, uh, belabor it, but that began, the focus of our pillars are achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming. And in terms of how they align with the M Y S P, I would modestly suggest that things like investing in student learning supports, technology, special education, really aligns with our achieving. And there's obviously overlap and, and interweaving of these. But the funding, which we get nothing from the ministry, we are aware, funding for faith-based, uh, programming, such things as chaplaincy, religious education, brand-new textbooks and materials for our religion and family life programs that reflect the concerted, uh, conversations by our bishops in Ontario, and what they, as teachers of the faith, uh, would recommend and indeed mandate for us to do, that's reflected in this, uh, and obviously reflects the believing priority. The belonging priority, we would suggest that the ever-growing emphasis, we saw this in surveys and other areas of mental health initiatives, being important to staff, to students, to parents, and equity and inclusion. And in terms of becoming, I guess the grants that we have for professional development, for innovation, for our pathways that we hear, uh, very often, uh, reports on, whether it's, uh, youth apprenticeship, whether it's, uh, S H S M, whether it's, uh, the myriad of pathways that our students have laid out before them, almost overwhelming. Uh, that, of course, helps support the, the becoming of students who, uh, are, were very fortunate to have with us, often from little ages of three to the ages of, of eighteen plus, before they head off to a university, hopefully a Catholic university. Community engagement is something that was important and that reflects, again, the work we did in the M Y S P. We did an online survey that opened, uh, at the start of April, and the stakeholder input helped us prioritize such things as mental health and wellbeing, classroom resources, equity and inclusion. And the feedback, of course, was used to help us with the final budget, and that was reported to, uh, trustees as well. There have been challenges. Uh, there's a limitation again on funding, and there's rising costs as well, but there's opportunities. We have strong community support. We have a very wonderful dovetailing with the M Y S P, and there is a focus of investment in student success and student achievement. I'd like to say, finally, that the budget that you have before you is one that reflects a commitment to fiscal responsibility, strategic alignment with our M Y S P, and the fact that we are supporting every learner in a fe- faith-filled environment. Just to highlight the survey, because I think it was phenomenal that we got such a response, there were, uh, over thirteen hundred responses, which was more than the year before, and respondents included fifty-nine percent parents and guardians, thirty-nine percent from staff, one percent from students, and school council members provided another one percent. The geographic representation was fairly, uh, reflective of, of where we are, thirty-four percent Oakville, thirty percent Burlington, twenty-six percent Milton, and ten percent Halton Hills. So, uh, with that, I'll take this opportunity to, uh, turn the, uh, microphone, uh, over to Superintendent Loft and his team. And once again, thank you, and thank you trustees for your commitment and your attention to this.
Good.
Thank you, Director Klein. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight's staff is presenting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Halton Catholic District School Board Budget Estimates for Approval. Under the leadership of our director, John Klein, uh, and input from our senior team, our dedicated financial staff have worked to produce this budget in an extremely tight timeline. Uh, just four weeks ago, the ministry announced our funding for this year, uh, May twenty-third. So their commitment ensures we deliver a fiscally responsible plan that prioritizes student success and aligns with our board strategic plan. Uh, today, we have, uh, members of our staff from our finance team here. We have Adam Cross, as Director Klein mentioned, our senior manager of financial services, and Cheryl Dalrimple, our manager of budget and capital. Uh, these individuals, along with our three analysts, Kylie Cannell, Dan O'Sullivan, and Manchi Chung, and the supervisor of accounting, Rebecca Albers, have worked many additional hours to ensure our budget is completed by the end of June, the ministry deadline. Thank you to all. Trustees, I am proud to present a balanced budget, compliant with ministry requirements and reflecting our prudent financial stewardship as outlined in the appendix A, compliance report. Our team has upheld transparency and integrity throughout this process. But before Adam and Cheryl, uh, provide a brief presentation, I'd just like to address one item, and it's classroom supplies. We've probably heard a little bit about, uh, that, especially in our survey that we had, uh, both with our trustees as well as with our, our school community. Um, so addressing classroom supplies, um, we have four point one million of, of our budget is relating to school budgets. So we have one point seven million for elementary, two point four million for secondary, uh, and they're part of a broader sixty-two point one million or so on, of, other operating expenses. There was definitely feedback from our consultation regarding supplies, uh, for students, whether it be paper, which is funded through the classroom supplies line, Chromebooks funded through our classroom computers, or textbooks, which is also fun, or which is funded through our classroom supplies, or our classroom textbook line. Just so everyone knows, that all three of these items are funded through the Learning Resources Fund, and it was formerly known as the, uh, People Foundation Grant under the old G S N's. So these funding allocations have not changed for a number of years. But having said this, we have allocated an additional two hundred thousand to assist secondary schools that may want to re-induce a commissioner. So we have heard it, and we have added some money back into the budget for this year. Unfortunately, not as much as we'd like, but we're just working within the means that we have. Uh, so now I'd like to send it over to Adam and Cheryl, who provide a brief presentation to go over the budget for approval.
Okay, uh, thank you. So there's just a couple of things on the agenda tonight, so we'll go over the changes, uh, that we've made, um, since last Tuesday, when we initially presented the budget. I will also highlight the additional staff that have been added, uh, for this budget compared to our revised estimates. And then, uh, we'll speak to our board financial position and our ministry compliance.
Uh, before proceed, uh, is this presentation visible to trustee online? Uh, I don't see it here on. Okay. Okay, Lucy, thanks.
Okay, uh, so the majority of the changes that we've made from, uh, last Tuesday to this Tuesday, uh, are just a reclassification of some items, uh, upon kind of our further review of our reports. Um, so there's no impact to our board financial position. We're still proposing to have a balanced budget, uh, for ministry reporting purposes, but we did reallocate the system navigator position, whi- which was previously in library and guidance, uh, to coordinators and consultants, because for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, that position will be filled by a consultant. So there's no increase in staff, it's just pro- better representation of, uh, who the individual is, uh, in terms of their qualifications, uh, for presentation purposes. We also reclassified three teachers from classroom teachers for instruction to special education, classroom teachers. So again, no impact financially, but just a reclassification of three teachers that are operating, um, specialized spec ed classrooms. And then, uh, from a facilities perspective, uh, reallocation of a co-op student, um, in people accommodation from supplies and services to salaries and wages to properly reflect, uh, that it's a co-op student. And then finally, uh, as it was brought to our attention last meeting, um, our facility capital reserve opening balance uh, was understated by two point two million, so we've, uh, corrected that for this last report. So in terms of the summary by, uh, category of expense or te- grouping of expense, you can see the only real change between one grouping and the other, another grouping, is for the system navigator position from library and guidance to coordinators and consultants. All the other changes that I spoke to stayed within, uh, their original grouping. It's just switching from, uh, one line item to another, uh, on the backend for budget purposes. So staffing impact, uh, overall, we've been able to add thirty-eight point five seven, uh, F T positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The two point five, uh, psychologists, so at revised estimates, uh, we had vacancies that it didn't look like we were going to be able to fill for twenty-four, twenty-five, so we contracted out, uh, the equivalent value of those positions, uh, to third parties for assessments. Uh, w- we are adding one payroll advisor due to the growing, uh, number of staff for the board. In terms of our elementary and secondary teachers, we're adding thirty-three total, so there is a decline, uh, in the elementary panel due to the declining enrollment that we're seeing in elementary, and then an increase in, uh, secondary. So we're, we're adding about fifty-five teachers on the secondary panel and reducing about twenty-nine teachers on the, uh, or sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two teachers on the elementary panel. Uh, we have one decrease in our P V P, so, uh, due to opening new schools, uh, and the spreading of enrollment across the new schools, uh, triggered a reduction of one vice principal, um, in, in terms of that position. And then, uh, again, the facilities co-op students, so just reflecting the one co-op student that was there. And then, uh, two positions that were previously in the budget, but we removed and revised, and now we're adding back for twenty-four, twenty-five, is the temporary payroll control supervisor, uh, hired to help us with our regional internal audit, uh, findings, and then, uh, an executive assistant in the director's office. So in terms of our financial position, uh, so this is the updated schedule from what you saw last period, or last Tuesday. Uh, so the capital reserve has now been, uh, increased to four point eight million, um, which is the two point two million, uh, difference that we, you were seeing from when we previously reported it to revise. So the one tricky piece in here where we have the two items below, uh, to do the reconciliation, so as part of our compliance, the ministry adds, uh, seventy-six thousand for our sinking fund interest, and then, uh, three hundred sixty-two thousand for previously committed capital projects that were committed to prior to twenty, twenty nineteen, uh, to the opening balance. Uh, and then that nets out in the in-year activity for zero impact on our reserves, but it's a, it's a piece that we have to add and then subtract, um, for ministry compliance purposes, uh, so that's the only kind of nuance here. So we're at that forty-one point seven million, uh, opening reserve, leading to forty-one point three million, uh, reserve at year end. And then from compliance perspective, uh, so I know there were questions, uh, last week about the two point five percent increase in revenue and the, the three percent increase in expenses, so, uh, we, we thought it'd be kind of more clear to show, uh, how we look at it from, uh, or how the ministry looks at it from a compliance perspective, uh, so they take that total revenue, uh, that we reported of five hundred and forty-six million, they subtract our school generate fund revenue and our education and development charges revenue, and any asset retirement obligation revenue uh, from that number for, uh, to create our revenue for compliance purposes. And then they take our total expenses, and similarly, they reduce the total expenses by the school generate fund expenses. Again, those committed capital projects, so the three hundred sixty-two thousand they saw on the previous slide, uh, for projects pre-twenty nineteen, the sinking fund interest, and then asset retirement obligation expenses, and then they add an employee fu- future benefit adjustment, and then interest on long-term debt adjustment. So that takes us, uh, from our five thirty-three to, uh, five eighteen point five million in expenses, which mirrors the revenue for compliance purposes. And then the next few slides, just, uh, they were also included in the report to the board, just the various components of compliance. So just as a reminder, uh, there are kind of two new, uh, areas of compliance that they added, um, last year when they revamped the core education funding. So on top of the school board admin compliance and the revenue expense compliance, uh, they also have the facilities and transportation, uh, compliance. So happy to report that we're compliant in all areas, um, for ministry reporting purposes for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. So with this, I will now read the first motion, first part of the motion, and the two trustees who have declared a conflict. So trustee, uh, Saunders and trustee Kelly will not participate in this discussion. Okay, you did not vote for this item for the first part. Uh, so I'll place it on a table, move it and second it, then open up question time and debate time. So can I, oh, the, we have the first motion on the screen. I will read the motion, resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six salary and benefits budget estimates in the amount of four hundred and thirty million, three, uh, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Looking for a mover for the first part? May I have a mover first, for the first part?
I'll move it.
Trustee Ohan Chanara moves. Looking for a second, then? Trustee Powell second. I shall now open up question time. Trustees, we have three minutes for questions. Uh, please raise your hand, and, uh, I will give you the floor, three minutes, keep, keep asking your questions, and I'll direct, direct them to staff. So with this, I shall open up question time. Uh, you don't see any hands up? No questions? Okay, raise your hand. I can't see anything on the screen. Sorry, okay, yeah, 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 okay, sorry, my, my apologies. Trustee Carabella, your hand is up first. I can see that now, yeah.
Thank you.
You're the floor.
Could you please clarify about the, um, two hundred thousand dollars that now is being given to schools for the commissioners? Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Loft, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella. Uh, that is correct. So we are matching the cost of a commissioner for all schools that require one or are requesting one, uh, so we'll put in half and the school will put in half.
Trustee Carabella?
Okay, so that covers like several high schools. It's mostly for the high schools, not, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella. That's correct, yeah, it's the, our high schools only.
Yeah.
Great, trustee Carabella.
And then regarding the paper, because we didn't, so you, you spoke about the paper, but then you talked about the commissioners. So was there extra budgeting for the paper?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, trustee Carabella, we don't have extra money for, for papers and stuff. We haven't received funding for that in a number of years. Like I've mentioned, I kind of before, it's kind of, uh, um, something we just haven't received. I think we're up, inflation's over forty-six percent, and we haven't received any extra funding. Now, having said that, last year, we did add more in for the principals, so in their school budgets, to be able to add in, um, additional, depending on how they see fit within their individual schools, now they want to run it that way. Um, so we kept it the same as we did last year when we did increase and reallocate things a bit last year. But as far as any new money, um, there isn't any new money to give, so.
Go ahead, trustee Carabella.
Sorry, point of privilege. Can we use microphones? I can't hear, sorry.
Sorry, Janet. Oh, sorry, trustee Ohan. So through you, Mr. Chair, one of the slides that was up showed the, uh, executive admin for the director. So is, uh, was that a new position?
Uh, Superintendent Loft?
I didn't understand.
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, a couple of years ago, we approved the addition of one, uh, executive assistant in the director's office. Um, due to budgetary constraints, we had held, uh, that position unfilled. Um, this year, we're proposing to fill the position.
So that.
Great, trustee, good. Go ahead.
So follow-ups, that's how many executive, uh, admin in the, in the office?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, no, like the director's office includes a number of areas within the central admin staff, so privacy is under there, research is under there, communications under there. So there's a broad, human rights and equities under there, there's a broad range of departments that roll up into the director's office when we refer to that from a budget perspective. So it's not specifically to Director Klein, but his oversight of that area of the budget.
Okay, thank you, I didn't understand that, so appreciate that, thank you.
You're done, trustee Carabella, questions? Okay, up next, trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes. Okay, I see no other hands up, trustee Saunders, I can't, your hand is up, but I'll ask you to put it down because you cannot participate in this discussion. So I'll ask that you put your hand down. Trustee Kennedy, we're waiting for you when you're ready.
Yeah, thank you, I just a question about the thirty three more teachers, so two hundred and eighty six more students, I think, but thirty three teachers. It's, how does that ratio just work out?
Mr. Cross?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, so we work with superintendent and CFO and our planning department to project kind of each school in what each school is sort of forecasting. And then through that process, we look at the various class sizes that we need to adhere to when we're speaking to compliance and then slot the teachers based on the projected demand that we are budgeting for.
Trustee Kennedy?
So trustees also did a budget survey, I just wondered how many trustees did the survey and if that those that data was shared with the other trustees?
I'll interject here, I would not like that information to be to be public knowledge and trustees have provided feedback, so let's consider it as trustee feedback when we get to the question. So please refer the question to.
Can trustees be given the feedback offline then of the budget survey results from trustees?
I I think we are veering off the topic of the budget here, so please specify, I mean, tell your question to the budget as presented.
What kind of feedback did trustees give for the budget and was any of that implemented in the budget?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, as discussed before, we were late to get the the funding notification. But having said that, there was some and that was one of the item that I addressed earlier was the assistance on the commissioners. Given that there was no additional funding, a lot of the things that were asked for were things that involve additional funding, which we do not currently have to allocate. So we kept the budget pretty much as neutral as we could, with the exception of the staffing elements that we addressed earlier, which is more just growth related.
What's a local budget for, let's say, the typical high school, St. Thomas Aquinas, I think it's around two hundred thousand, is that roughly accurate?
Superintendent Love?
Yeah, do you want to pull up the budget, just an arbitrary high school, we won't necessarily name one, but maybe just an arbitrary. So we'll we'll pull that information up.
The middle one, not the purchase.
Not the hive, yeah, it's, so we'll we'll come back to that one, Mr. Chair, as we look it up.
Thank you, your next question? Okay, so do you want us to wait? Hands up, so we are good, okay. Do you have any other unrelated questions in the meantime? Because I'm just trying to save the time and respect everybody's time. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, just a question about reserve, so we had forty two million, one hundred and three thousand at the end of last year, now it's forty one, seven sixty four. So it's still off by four hundred and eighteen thousand, I'm just wondering why that's the case?
Yes. Is the cross busy with something else?
Through you, Mr. Chair, so it's the two components that the ministry requires us to add in for the capital, so that sinking fund interest of around seventy six thousand and then the three hundred and sixty two thousand and it's basically like the amortization cost of capital assets that were pre-approved by the board to use accumulated surplus for prior to September twenty nineteen. So it's those two items that make up the difference. And this is why we always kind of refer to, for ministry compliance purposes, they basically make us a double save for that decision. So they are essentially allowing us to use our accumulated surplus for those capital items, which essentially we use it to when the amortization is incurred on those assets, so typically over the life of the asset, which is about forty years. But then they require us to include it from a compliance perspective. So you can see on this slide, we essentially have this total of eight hundred and twenty seven thousand, which is the net impact of our use of reserves for capital items. And then we have an operating surplus of eight twenty seven to offset that usage. So that's 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 where you're seeing it, you're seeing it in the sinking fund interest earned adjustment of seventy six and the committed capital of three sixty two, that that's sort of what's offsetting that component. And all it's it's moving from like below the line, as we refer to it, up above. So there's a separate line where we have our our land in in other areas of our accumulated surplus that gets moved into the compliance calculation when the ministry is looking at it. So again, this is like not a public sector accounting standard adjustment, this is a ministry specific adjustment, but that's basically what they're doing, they're they're adding that kind of forcing of double savings. So basically, they want us, even though they allowed us to use reserves in the past, they want us to replenish those reserves. And essentially, how they're doing that is mirroring the accumulated amortization or the annual amortization of those assets and making us add it back into our internally restricted reserves.
So they are lower, though, than when we ended last year, like we have less to work with in reserves this year.
From a capital perspective, yes, yeah.
But just to clarify again, though, that that is items that the board, our board has approved us to use for capital, we've set it aside for that amortization. That's what the double saving is, we actually have an eight hundred and twenty seven million dollar or hundred thousand dollar surplus this year. That's what our surplus is in operating and because the ministry is is essentially not allowing us to utilize the money that we set aside in past years to pay for our capital, which will now be here for another thirty nine years or so, we have to save again for eight hundred and twenty seven thousand each year and it's going to go up depending on if we use more of our capital reserve for us to save it. So what Adam means by double saving is, we've already set money aside in our capital reserve to cover these items. It's the amortization each year for the next now forty years, now thirty nine years that we have to pay. So as a board, we've already used those reserves, we got approval to use the reserves, we use those reserve, ministry approved us to use those reserves. But we have to save for it twice to be balanced.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, have we have we used the reserves that trustees approved, the seven fourteen yet for technology and security yet?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair, so we have started the purchasing of those items, but in terms of using the reserves, we don't, we won't technically use the reserves until the end of the year. And you only use the reserves if we are in a deficit position. So if our actuals line up with what we budgeted, then yes, we would see the additional cost. But if there's a change favorably to us, then it could be slightly less than the number that was approved. It all just depends on kind of where the rest of our financial reporting lands. So we have started to make the purchases, but in terms of reallocating the reserve, that won't happen until year end.
All the purchases will be made by the end of August, right?
Yeah, actually, they'll be made before that because we want to receive shipment, because that's one of the audit requirements that our external auditors will look at, is to make sure that we received it prior to August thirty first. So we have to get the orders in earlier than later.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
Occasional teachers went up, it looks like we're budgeting more than eight, eight percent more than last year, do you know why that would be the case?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, so there's a couple of components that contributed to the increase. So it should be noted that included in that occasional teacher line is also our supply costs for educational assistance. And so we've we've seen two components of educational assistance increase. So one being the fill rate, so which is positive for the board. So when educational assistant calls in sick, we've been replacing them at a higher rate than we had seen in previous years. And then also, just in terms of the number of days absent in educational assistance, we've been seeing that increase. So we've put in additional budget for that, so that's about five hundred thousand of the change there. And then a couple of other components, so as part of the collective bargaining, the occasional teacher rates have increased from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, about two point five percent. So that's contributing to the dollar value increase that you're seeing there. So those are the two main components that are driving the increase. So from a teacher perspective, we've maintained it relatively flat to twenty four twenty five, but the increase in the rates has increased the dollar value.
Good, good, trustee Kennedy.
So last year, we thought we might have been able to save a million dollars this year on attendance, did we have to submit that plan to the ministry like this current year, did we submit that plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, trustee Kennedy, we didn't have to, we actually were, we did our revised estimates, we were balanced. So it was based on that one, yes, that was a prior one, so.
Go ahead. You still have one whole minute.
No, yeah, so the average for secondary school is about two forty four, but if we look at kind of the median, we're looking at about two hundred and ten thousand for an average school, yeah.
And so what's the cost of a commissioner, like not the one we had two years ago, but current cost going forward?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, it's about forty thousand.
Total?
Yep.
For a whole year?
Yeah.
That was a few years ago, though, it's not higher with inflation?
Well, we.
Thought there was forty six percent inflation or something.
There's forty six percent inflation going back, trustee Kennedy, to two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, which is when our funding changed, that's the forty six percent. It's about that forty to fifty thousand, we went on the forty thousand ish, so it depends on the number of hours and such they work, but that's really what it is. We checked that too, just to make sure, so there's plenty for them.
So the two hundred thousand is because there's ten schools, one per school, twenty thousand per school. What about schools with smaller budgets, though, that only have maybe a hundred and fifty thousand budget, they have to kick out twenty out of a hundred and fifty, let's say? Is that really fair to them when schools have higher budgets?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy.
Pro rate it.
Yeah, I I don't think we have that issue at any of our secondary schools, trustee Kennedy. What I mean, which I don't think we have an issue coming up with that funding, because we did have some schools this year that actually did have a commissioner. They paid for the commissioner of their budget, so I I don't think that that'll be a concern to our schools. So I have this, this should help them enough to have that commissioner. And as I repeat again, we have not received additional funding for these kind of things. Commissioners are something that other boards do not have. So this is something that our board has elected to do in the past and it's a cost to us that we're not funded for. So as to assist the schools, we've added the two hundred thousand back in to help as a kind of a matching program.
We we have a meeting with the principals tomorrow to kind of discuss this. So obviously, your feedback now and the feedback we receive from them may shape any like slight tweaks to what we're proposing, but from a budget perspective, we've earmarked two hundred thousand to contribute to the cost of the commissioners.
Thank you.
So the school is a little short, we may be able to help them out?
Potentially, yeah.
Go ahead.
Lastly, I I went through the survey, I found about fifteen responses for lunchroom supervisors, they asked to bring that back as well. We had that a couple of year ago, is there any ability to give, because that would be coming out of that two hundred thousand dollar budget as well, and schools are paying for that right now. Anything we can do there?
I I'll address that again. No, there there has not been, there's been, like you said, there has not, that has not been added to it. Again, in order to be a balanced budget, these are the tough decisions we have to make and that was one of them. But it is a lot, the cost of a lunchroom supervisor is significantly less than a commissioner, trustee Kennedy, so.
You have eight seconds, but before you do that, I just want to, I think we are touching into an area which is really operational at a grassroots level, which should be addressed by the principal of the school in collaboration with superintendents and all that stuff. So these details, minor minor details, I think they are really operational, but our responsibility as trustees is to see the bigger picture, okay? So and I'm sure that we we have those meetings all the time with senior staff and their requests are attended to and taken care of, correct?
Maybe just add a little bit, we actually did listen, that's why we did add it back in. So we heard some schools and we actually looked at a way to do it and this is what we thought was the best way to do it.
You have eight seconds.
Up to fifty percent.
Yeah.
Eight seconds left. Okay, thank you, I see no other trustees' hands up, we are talking, we are in question time on the first motion, which was moved by trustee O'Han Chenada, seconded by trustee Powell. Before I take this to the second part, which is the debate part, I just want to have a comment here and I just want to make sure that we all understand the process and the process that was followed to get to this point, as far as trustees are concerned. First of all, trustees were mandated mandated to attend one of the OESC professional development sessions, specific session on governance as far as education finance is concerned, and all trustees hopefully have attended and completed those modules. Trustees also provided a professional development session on the HCD, HCSB budgeting process on March twenty twenty five. In March twenty twenty five, trustees were also invited to participate in the budget survey, as trustee Kennedy mentioned, in April twenty twenty five. Trustees have been involved in the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget working session on June tenth. And trustees were invited to submit all their questions and queries to staff in advance of this operational budget on the board website. And so I think the process was transparent and involved everybody involved in the process. And as I mentioned, this is really operational, it's an operational budget and trustees do have a responsibility to man, to to what do you call it, to 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 look at the budget and make sure that whatever we have said in the multi-year strategic plan is is followed and followed by staff. Okay, with that, I shall call the vote on the first item. Sorry, I got to go to the debate part of it. Let me see, okay, so with this, I shall now open up the debate part of the first motion, trustees, please put your hand up, read on the first item. Can we have the motion up on the screen, please? Oh, sorry.
Point of privilege microphone, chair, please, yeah.
Thank you, thanks for the reminder. We are going to, we are going to vote on the first part of the motion, the motion is on the screen. It was moved by trustee O'Han Chenada, seconded by trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote on this item? Trustee O'Han Chenada?
I'm proud to approve, in favor.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor. In favor.
Trustee Philbert McGuire Yebua, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy, sorry, and I'm in favor. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, we have six in favor, one opposed, no abstention, motion carries. We shall now move on to the second motion, second part of this motion. I shall read the motion and place it on the table. Resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget estimates excluding salary and benefits in the amount of hundred and three million, million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Hundred and three million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Looking for a mover, please? Hundred and three million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars, looking for a mover, please? Moved by trustee Powell. Looking for a second, please?
I can second it, trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew, second. I shall now open up question time for this part of the uh motion, trustees, please raise your hands if you would like to ask questions. Okay, so trustee Saunders, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, sir, I, I didn't understand, you were saying that you adjusted our capital reserves by two point two million, what was the other side of the uh? The um adjustment, like, like, like this is one side, where, where did you find this money from?
Uh, yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so uh, we didn't find the money, we just forgot to reflect it on the table that uh we had presented in the board report. Uh, the last meeting, so uh, at revised estimate, we are projecting uh, uh, committed capital reserve balance of fifteen million, but uh. Due to delays in projects, uh, we're projecting twelve million uh at this point for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six as our opening. And then, uh, so that difference, that two point six million dollar difference, uh, needed to be added back to the capital reserve. Um, which wasn't reflected in the table that uh we showed last week, so essentially we showed a one-sided transaction last week and. Adding the two point six back uh makes us whole to the number that you would have seen at revised estimates. Um, when you look at those two line items specifically, those two reserves uh specifically, so um, at revised estimates, we have like two point five and fifteen, and now we have uh four point eight and um twelve.
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, you say you took it out of one reserve and put it into another, is that?
Yeah, so uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so how the capital uh works, so anytime uh the board approves the use of reserves for a capital project. Uh, most often, we're using uh money that's in our capital reserve or facilities reserve uh to pay for that project. And then uh what the ministry does is uh it requires us to have a separate internally restricted reserve for those projects that we've committed to. Uh, so if you recall in last week's presentation, there was a couple of slides where we listed out all the projects that have been approved in the past for. Uh, use of our reserves, uh, so that's, that's why we're seeing the switch, so we're basically transferring it from one in internally restricted reserve, the facilities reserve to. Uh, the committed capital uh reserve, so that's, that's sort of how it works, and then as we incur amortization on those assets, it's drawing down on. The capital project reserve, which is why you're seeing the eight hundred thousand uh reduction on, in that area of the internally restricted reserves, and then the. Offsetting surplus in the unallocated reserve.
Again, sorry, I didn't understand, you used earlier the word one-sided adjustment, like, so if, if it's one-sided, then we would have been out of balance last week, is that right? Why, why did you use the word one-sided adjustment?
Yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, so uh, when we are completing our ministry reporting, there's a number of. Uh, forms that we have to fill out for capital, one of them being a list of capital projects that have been approved. Uh, for the use of reserves to pay for, uh, so when we were filling out those forms. Uh, we made the adjustment to reduce that number from committed from fifteen to twelve.
Yeah.
Uh, and that flows automatically into the reserve form uh in the ministry reporting. What we failed to do was add back the difference, uh, because we overrode uh the, the amount that we were projecting from revised to now. Um, back to the capital reserve, because it's just whenever we commit to it, we're moving it from facilities to that committed uh capital reserve line item. But because of, we weren't entering both components in the ministry reporting, uh, we missed it in terms of when we were prepping the table for the meeting.
Trustee Saunders, I saw it, super duper loved.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, so, uh, trustee Saunders, this wasn't a journal entry in our, in our books, it was on the E F A schedule, the one that we talked about last week, the two hundred and fifty-odd pages. So that's why it's not in our books, so when Adam's saying one-sided, it's not in our journal entry, it's a specifically a entry that's in the E F A's books. So we're pulling out certain parts of it, and when we pulled this out to show everyone, it was missing that. Million or so, so it's not a one-sided entry per se, as what you think it would be in our general, in our, in our ledger, it's a purely a operational. In the E F A's guidelines, we have to report to the ministry, which we would have caught when we went to do our final reporting, which is what we're doing right now.
Go ahead, trustee Saunders.
Okay, yeah, I have another question, um, there was a line item operating funding classroom staffing for pupil allocation, indigenous education classroom staffing. And I've noticed it's gone down by thirty-seven percent, I'm just wondering, what's the reason for that? Uh, I think it's in uh, I think it's in B, B six, maybe?
Uh, super duper loved.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders, you have a very good question, it's actually, if you look at an aggregate, there's two parts to this grant, we only see one part of it, the other part. Is about one point eight or so million, so in aggregate, we're getting about one point nine five for an indigenous grant over both years. So the ministry, that's, they changed their amount that they're funding in that situation, but they've made it up in another one, so our total still is one point nine five million in aggregate. So they continue to defund us that, so it's a little misleading that way, the way they split it out, but yeah, we're still getting our full funding for it, it's actually significant amount.
Good.
Okay, uh, another question that, um, through you, Mr. Chair, there's another line item, capital grants, um, capital grants, and they were, they've gone down thirty-five percent. I guess from last year to the proposed, I'm just wondering what happened there, what, what, is there like a reallocation, or is, wha- what's the nature of that issue?
Yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so the capital that's funded through our capital plan applications, uh, so last year. Because we were uh building the three new schools that opened in September, uh, the ministry was funding us a lot more money last year for those projects. Now that we have less schools that we're currently constructing, the funding has been adjusted accordingly.
Okay.
Uh, good, trustees.
Uh, yeah, I think the, the final question they have this right now is in, um, so when there's trustee salaries, wages, professional development. There's an amount of fifty-two thousand that I believe is allocated for professional development, what would, what would that uh cover, what would, what would be under that uh expense item?
Uh, super duper loved.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders, uh, that item is, there's a few items in there, so we have conferences and, and professional developer trustees, our student trustees are also part of that. Uh, O X T A conferences and trainees are part of that as well, uh, the reason it's gone down is we kind of looked at what our historical spending has been, and it was a little bit lower, so we adjusted the spending. Uh, accordingly, but really, those are the items that are, that are in that fifty or so thousand dollars.
But, sorry, I have one more question, uh, there's an item that shows up a number of times called contract services, and there's one amount, um. I think it's V, B six, I think, it's uh nine point one million, and I'm just wondering what contract services would represent?
Super duper loves.
I'm going to take this one, guys. I'll, I'll take this one, okay, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders, uh, there's a, quite a few items in there, so um, there's things like snow plowing. Um, insurance, our ground repairs and maintenance, um, waste disposal, professional fees. And things like pest control, and like the smaller ones, but they add up, pest control, software, E I P, miscellaneous, uh, cleaning and maintenance, things like that, so we add them all together.
Okay, that's it, let me thank you. Okay, thank you, uh, up next, trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes.
Thank you, just wondering if you can explain the difference, explain the difference between staff development and professional development, what goes under each category?
Yeah, uh.
Uh, Mr. Cross?
That's the million-dollar question, um, uh, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, so uh, when we, when we do our ministry reporting, uh, basically all the. Kind of categories that we present uh to you, where it says classroom instruction, uh, staff development, occasional teachers. Those are all uh categories that the ministry wants to see us reporting on, uh, so all the stuff in instruction basically relates to. Training that's done at the school level, so impacting our school staff, and then uh the professional development that you're seeing. That's board-wide, so uh, that's the remaining uh staff, but also included in that is certain costs uh from a school perspective. So the only kind of piece that's not included from a school perspective is the supply costs, so the cost of release time. Uh, that will show in staff development, but uh professional development doesn't include that component of the costs.
Trustee Kennedy?
And so what, what part of the total is discretionary that we can decide to do versus what, say mandatory?
Super duper loves.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, well, I guess the question is, is training mandatory? Uh, I will start, yes, in some situations it definitely is, and there's others as a learning institution, like I believe that really we represent about point four percent or so was how much we spend on our professional development and such as an organization. I know on, on the classroom level, there's about four hundred thousand or twenty-one percent of the one point nine million that's from a R E P, the responsive education programs. Or either envelopes as well, we have to spend it on that area, but then we have, again, as a learning organization, we have special education training. We have faith formation training, we have curriculum, including things like STEM and, and STEAM and math, which obviously math is part of STEM and STEAM. Um, and then student success as well, so those are the areas as an organization that we have for um, for spending our professional development, and I believe we've. Addressed some of this before, and we forwarded some information, and I believe um, uh, superintendent Cole has also mentioned some items before on this, but that's essentially what we have. Um, as far as what that amount breaks down to.
And what would be like the biggest cost of it, would it be hiring people to come in to train, or would it be occasional teachers replacing teachers who are in training? The time?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Definitely, there's a large cost on coming in to train, so we have to release the teachers to go and do the professional development. And our, also, as, as Adam mentioned earlier, our cost has gone up another two and a half percent on our occasional teachers, so there's an extra cost there as well. Um, so that would be, the trainer isn't as much as really the, the release time, right, for all our teachers to, to be released for the training. I know that there's um, new religious textbooks coming out too, which would require training and such for the upcoming year. So, but it's definitely would be more in the actual release time for the training, not so much the trainer.
Uh, just uh, add a comment here for trustee Kennedy, um, I think, uh, I was reading some, some section of the Education Act and uh. Professional development is mandated to be done by the ministry, and so it's, it's staff which has to decide which areas need professional development and which. Uh, don't need, correct, uh, super duper loves?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we just, and we do report, as Adam mentioned and Cheryl mentioned before, we do report on all our professional development to the ministry directly as part of our uh. Our, our reporting, for that two hundred and fifty-page document, it's definitely outlined there, professional development and staff development in that report, and the ministry is well aware, but, but the cost.
Uh, go ahead, trustee Kennedy.
Did any of the recent P P Ms have any impact on it, like I remember reading one of them, I forget the number, where it said that they want teachers in front of students as much as possible, uh, maybe seven seventy-one, did that have any impact on any changes of how we deliver? Training during school hours?
I'm not aware of that, but maybe I'll defer to some like colleagues.
Yeah, I'm going to look at superintendent script, I can see you're, you're, you're facing me, I can't see your legs, I'm blocked here, and then maybe superintendent Crow.
I, I can speak to the presentation that I did last week about some of the professional training that teachers are provided, and there are times, we actually prioritize teachers to be in the classroom, but there's times that they actually need to be withdrawn in order to um. Get the necessary assistance, so for example, a coach comes in, they want to meet with the teacher, they want to come back in the classroom, that is not an ideal situation to be. Um, having somebody, like two people in the classroom trying to confer while there's a classroom of students, so the release time is necessary. There's other times where the teacher would be released to go work with a professional, knowledge hook will provide, provide somebody, because for example, to us at their cost. But we still need to release the teacher in order to provide that training, uh, so that's still, that might take them out for an hour for the day, but then. We're not having them out for the whole day with the students, but we need that, that supply teacher then provide support throughout the day for teachers. So to answer your question, they're not always out for the full day, oftentimes they might, with the model that we had, it was just partial time. And sometimes we'll have a teacher come in and release, so that teachers can actually work more carefully with a small group of students with some training.
Okay, superintendent Crow?
Sure, if I can add to that through you, Mr. Chair, um, we've certainly in, tried, I think, post-COVID to adjust the way in which we're doing professional development, you know, removing. Teachers for um, large groups of teachers, um, for professional development days, doesn't necessarily, um. I think we tried to adjust based on, on making sure we want teachers in front of the classroom as much as possible, but I'll give you a concrete example of where there will be professional development needed next year, so the ministry is releasing a new kindergarten curriculum at some point. Uh, for implementation for September, uh, we haven't received that document yet, we don't have any indication, we'll have it before school ends this year. There's an expectation that our teachers and our E C Es are trained and delivering that program. So although we'll leverage our professional development days as much as possible, there's a requirement that staff need to be trained, make sure they're comfortable. Because they're the ones that are teaching and reporting on that, uh, so professional development is critical during a time when the ministry is continuing to make ongoing curriculum changes. Uh, it exceeds the amount of time that we can do during professional development days, partially because the ministry also gives us specific topics we have to cover on professional development days.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, from last year.
Do you have the numbers, trustee Kennedy, or just, okay? Uh, I didn't, I didn't hear a question.
School budgets of four point one million have been included, what was it last year?
Yeah, yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so uh, the main change is just the, a reallocation from an enrollment perspective, so we're seeing an increase of about ninety thousand for. Secondary and then uh a decrease of about sixty for elementary, so uh net new is thirty thousand, um. Outside of what Aaron spoke to about the commissioners, so from a pure what each school is getting allocated, the total will be about thirty thousand more.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
So is that more or less than what the core funding went up, I think it went up three point eight, did the school budgets go up the same, or did it go up less or more?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, so the core funding from uh non-staffing perspective stayed flat, uh, so we've actually added money to it, even though the funding. Didn't change for us.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, super duper loves. And again, I'd like to reiterate that we did not get any additional funding, and have it for a number of years in any of these areas.
Trustee Kennedy?
Actually, a lot of that, uh, just regarding grade eleven English, I know it was this year where we had the change, did we get any extra funding from the ministry, the result of only having one grade eleven English class versus having more than. Uh, one in the year before, or any savings that the board has, you know, received from having only one course versus having two courses?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, are you talking, uh, sorry, Mr. Through, through trustee Kennedy, are you talking about the indigenous class for English?
For the non-AR, do we get anything extra, for only having one class versus having two classes, we used to have two different types of.
Oh, I see, for English, right, we're talking about.
Anything above and beyond, say, two years ago?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, the only thing that we would get extra for, trustee Kennedy, would be if we operate a class below the twenty-three to one ratio in, in teaching. So we would get, there is additional funding for us to off, offer a class for indigenous education if it's below the twenty-three to one, so we would offer the class below twenty-three to one, um, unless.
Sure, certainly through you, I think it's important to recognize the ministry is providing significant funding for indigenous education, when part of that is training, so we're certainly leveraging the funds that are provided. And envelope by the ministry to make sure that our staff are implementing indigenous education across our system, including the grade eleven English course, but not, not only the grade eleven English course. Uh, there is, like I say, and I know it was reviewed already, there's significant funds provided by the ministry year over year, uh, which demonstrates their commitment to indigenous education, and I think. Signals to us the importance uh for our board to continue the good work that's being done.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy? Done? Okay, still have one minute, twenty seconds, so. Uh, so you forfeit, forfeit that now, so we, uh, I see no other trustees' hands up, uh, so with that, I shall close the question time and open up debate time. Would trustees like to debate on the second motion, can we have the motion up on the screen, please? Thank you, trustees, though, would like to debate on this, trustee Kennedy, your hand is still up there, okay? Okay, thank you, uh, so uh, since there's uh no hands up now, uh, I would, I will call the vote on the motion, you see on the screen. This motion was moved by trustee Powell, seconded by trustee Agnew. Trustee uh Kennedy, how do you vote?
I pass.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Uh, Vaishya Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Saunders? Opposed. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Philbert McGuire and Yabua, and trustee Carabella? Trustee Philbert McGuire and Yabua, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy, sorry, Kennedy opposed, and I'm in favor. You have seven in favor, two opposed, no extension, motion carries. I want to, before we move on, I just want to thank Superintendent Loves and your team, Mr. Cross, Mr. Daralimpel, and your team, the background, you mentioned those names, I've forgotten them by now, but I want to really thank you for the short time in which you have come up with this balanced budget, okay, really appreciate it, and please pass on our thanks to your staff. So with that, we shall move on to our next order of business is item number five, moving into camera. We have to move into camera, may I have a motion to move into camera? Before a mover, trustee Powell moves.
I can second, Chair.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Kelly? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Trustee Saunders opposed, I'll take this to a recorded vote, sorry, I'll take to a recorded vote. So we have item number five, motion to move into camera, trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders opposed. Trustee Powell? We have seven in favor, one opposed, no extension, motion carries, we shall now move into camera, please.